We're live, it is on, it is on.
I don't think so. Yeah.
Well, that's what it was, I was trying to came in.
He's a huge state fan.
Oh, okay. So he's bumping them, that's what he's doing, huh?
Yeah, he did, he's downed twice this week.
This is kind of a bad form.
Well, it is.
It's my kid.
You know, it's one thing to do it, you know, the week before signing day versus, you know, back before the, um, you know.
Way early, yeah.
Yeah, we're, they still have time to go off, make some business.
When is signing day?
It's next week.
What was that? They gave him like a week to scramble?
Right, yeah. There's two more that have, I was just reading, just years before it came up here, two more that have not made a decision which way they're going.
Speak business now, huh?
Both, both four-star. Of course, and that, Wodjuk, he's a, he's a Michigan fan.
Right.
So he's not here as hard on Harbaugh and trying to explain the way a little bit better.
So they're gonna be better, what?
With the, uh, the legislation, you can't speak out villages ninety days before, um, so that guy, Ranger Todd, or he runs the sheriff's town. So I'm saying the legislation that does what, you can't speak out villages.
Oh, yeah.
Ninety days before, you know, it's really unclear as to exactly what it says, but, Curtis Edger from the county basically told us, don't do it at all, so Dave's here on his own time, his own car, and, uh, just to make sure that work goes well.
Oh.
It's the eight-hundred-megahertz, uh, radio.
Good evening, everyone, it's seven o'clock, and welcome to the meeting this evening. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to get started. Great, Angie, would you mind doing the roll call this evening?
Thomas Hado, Westover's here, Instrom.
Yep.
Dockett.
Here.
Bronn.
Here.
Chick.
Here. All right, that takes us on to the adopt the balance of the agenda. Uh, Mr. Wagner asked if we could please add one agenda item, and that is for a firefighter, firefighter, firefighter hire. Uh, does any objections for that? All right, we'll add that as number three on the agenda items. Anything else? I'll make a motion to approve the, um, amended agenda. Instrom motion, Thomas supported. Those in favor? Aye. Those oppose? Motion passes. This takes us on to our first call to the public. It's an opportunity for anyone to get up and speak and share your thoughts. I remind everyone, it's not a question and answer session here on the board, we cannot respond to you at this time, at this time, and we do try to limit you to three minutes. We have our first speaker.
I'm sorry, Mary, I'm not up. Mary Devlin, nine-two-one-one Brookside. I noticed that there are several applying for the Planning Commission vacancies. They are all very professional and well-qualified. However, I would personally like to see Sam and Larry remain on the commission. I think that Sam has done a lot of, has a lot of good ideas, and he does a lot for the community, including the pond hockey tournament coming up, which I hope the weather holds up for. Brings in many people to the area and is good for local businesses. Whomever you decide on, there need to be incentives to bring businesses, development, as well as residents to this area. I still would like to see something unique to draw people to this township. As I've said before, Dundee has Cabela's, Frankenmuth has its Bronners. Think about what Northfield Township could have. If our township grows and prospers, everyone benefits, including our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Good evening, Ed Voitas, six-two-three-five Hellner Road. Congratulations. You guys have a great opportunity tonight. An opportunity to put two new members on the Planning Commission doesn't come up too often. We have an outstanding group of individuals that have stepped forth and offered their talents, and their talents are quite impressive. You can't find individuals with those kind of credentials too often. Like anybody who's watched the Planning Commission over the last twelve to eighteen months knows that they have struggled. For, from the attempts to remove the chairwoman, to the changing of the rules, to allow just a simple majority to rule on many issues that are critical, that should have overwhelming support, I think there's clear evidence of the dysfunction there. There are problems with the planners, having two groups of planners walking away saying, "We can't work with you guys." We talked about that last time, I don't want to spend any more time on that, but, you know, our third planner is going to cost us probably an average of fifty-four percent more than the last one. That's more tax dollars, more money. Why? Because of the dysfunction on the Planning Commission. The inability to follow the master plan, which should be its guidebook, that should be the simplest, most straightforward guide there is. So I'd ask you to take a very close look. You know, really at the top of the list, Jennifer Delisle. How could you find a more qualified candidate? She has a legal degree, she's a lawyer, she has experience on the Planning Commission, she's attended numerous seminars and meetings about planning within the state. I mean, she, her credentials are as good as anybody I've seen. Plus, she's demonstrated her dedication to this community. She's worked on multiple committees, volunteer committees, given her time. She's dedicated to this community. She has great credentials, she's, she's shown her dedication, she's an outstanding candidate. Second, Jack Seacrest. Look at his CV. How could you find a better qualified scientist? Some of you might say, "Why would you need a scientist on a Planning Commission?" You're going to face a lot of difficult technical questions. Sewer capacity, water treatment plant, what should we do? He's not going to be troubled with the technical demands of those meetings. He's going to be able to help the Planning Commission. He has the skill. Look at his experience. How could you find two more qualified technical people? One from a legal background in planning, another from a technical standpoint in science. Two excellent candidates. And yes, the third, you'll probably wonder about, Craig Warburton. He stood at this podium and said several things that you guys have not liked. I know that. But, you know, he's been at the Planning Commission meetings, he's been at the Township Board meetings. Why? Because he cares about his community, he cares about his neighborhood, he cares about the environment. He's demonstrated a real commitment to this community. So you have several outstanding candidates. You have an opportunity to move the Planning Commission forward, to get it past some of the things that it struggled with, and you have some excellent people standing up to volunteer. I hope you'll take full advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have our next speaker?
Good evening, Dave, I'm sorry, David Halteman, seventy-three-twenty Webster Church Road. And, uh, I'm going to change up the topic a little bit. I come to speak to you, uh, reference the Emergency Communications Millage renewal that will be on the ballot on, uh, March eighth. I'm speaking to you not only as a citizen of Washington County, but I'm also the Operations Manager for Washington on Metro Dispatch. I've worked for the county for over twenty-four years, and the radio communication system, uh, which was funded by the Emergency Communications Millage, was really one of the most successful projects I've been involved with. The Millage paid for the construction of towers and the infrastructure needed to support more than twenty-three-hundred mobile and portable radios for every police, fire, and EMS responder in the county. Not only did the system establish interoperable communications for all of our first responders, it also supported seamless communications with our neighboring counties when there was mutual aid requirements, uh, for instance, with Livingston County or Monroe County. The system also provides communications platform for several of our support organizations, including the Red Cross, uh, several of our school districts, as well as the area hospitals. The system has significantly improved our response capabilities to large-scale emergencies such as the Dexter tornado and the, uh, winter crash we had along US twenty-three near Mylan involving multiple vehicles, fatality, amputation, responders from all different jurisdictions working together on the same radio system. In addition, we've improved, uh, many of our coordinated efforts for large-scale events such as, uh, U of M football games, uh, the Manchester Chicken Broil, art fair, some of the local festivals, such as the Hockey Classic coming up, uh, some of the fireworks displays, all those things take a lot of coordination and communications is always the key element. As far as cost of the Millage, as I mentioned, it's a renewal, it's not an increase in taxes, it's a renewal at a point-two mil, which on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home with an SCV of one-hundred-thousand would be twenty-eight dollars per year, or a dollar sixty-seven a month. We feel that this renewal is very much needed because the radios will be in need of replacement, uh, many of them are becoming outdated and unsupported for parts and service. Uh, the Millage would fund the replacement of these radios over the duration of the ten-year renewal period. Ongoing maintenance of the towers, the transmitters, the emergency backup generators, the snow plowing at the tower sites, all of those, uh, functions need to be paid for, and the Millage would support that, and including the electrical and gas utilities all needed to operate the system. We also plan to take advantage of some of the emergent technologies, uh, for instance, eight-hundred megahertz paging for the fire departments, as well as mobile computers for the first responders. But what I'm, uh, most excited about is the purchase of a next-generation phone system that would support all of the nine-one centers in the county. As I mentioned, I'm the Operations Manager for Washington Metro Dispatch, and nine-one and communicating with the public to get the information is really the first part of that whole network of communications, and then getting that information out to the first responders. Next-generation nine-one equipment will provide for texting to nine-one, video, images, a lot of the platforms needed for all of these emerging technologies that we seem to see evolving every day. In conclusion, I think if the Millage is not renewed, uh, the revenue will still be needed to sustain the Emergency Communications System, and my concern is that the county would have to seek some type of payment or billing, uh, to the public safety agencies individually in order to support the system. There will be a website, uh, up by the end of the week that will include a lot of this information and additional information. I'll make sure to, uh, share that with Bill, so that he can forward that to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Susan Schenk, I live at six-hundred West Joy Road. I respectfully request that you appoint Jennifer Delisle to the Planning Commission tonight. I sent all of the trustees an email earlier today explaining in detail why I think she is so qualified. Her resume speaks volumes about her abilities. Jennifer is not just qualified in a technical sense, she's also very qualified in a personal sense. She's dedicated to building consensus in this community. She's always polite, she always listens respectfully to others regardless of their viewpoint or their positions on issues. She knows the law, and she can use her knowledge and her ability to build consensus to support this wonderful community. I also respectfully request that you appoint one of either Craig Warburton, Jack Seacrest, Udo Huff, or Larry Roman. And I say everybody's name because they're all qualified, and perhaps among you you can find a consensus on one of them. They're all very well-respected in the community, and they're all going to be moving this community forward constructively. We need Planning Commission members who understand and respect the planning process. We need members who respect the master plan and who respect all the members of this community. When people feel like they don't have a voice, they get really angry, they feel negative, they come to meetings and they say angry things. Having people on the Planning Commission who are able to build consensus is going to reduce that happening because the people will feel listened to. And then, regardless of the decisions that the Planning Commission comes to, if the people feel involved in the process, the process will work, and there will be a lot less contention in our community. This is a wonderful place to live, I don't question that, we all love living here. I mean, maybe some people don't, but I, I really think everybody here does, and I hope that you will try to build some consensus in your appointments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Hi, good evening, Udo Huff, six-four-three-one with Moleg Road. Yeah, I would like to introduce myself, uh, all the names, uh, so far, uh, brought up to you. I'm Udo Huff, and I also applied for the, uh, position on the Planning Commission. Not much known is about me, I show up here, what, what is Udo doing? We live here since more than, uh, my wife lives here, more than thirty years, I joined in more than twenty years. We operate a nice little horse farm, and the horse farm is pretty much the center of our, our life here in Northfield Township and all, what my wife and I also professionally do. I, um, run international projects, uh, and planning projects, uh, I do a lot of training, and, uh, I'm, not, no, not a lot of people know this, except Mr. Iaquinto, he got lately arrested by me, uh, on a fundraiser in Livingston County. I'm a deputy, uh, with the Livingston County Sheriff's Office mounted, and I do this more than eighteen years. So, uh, I, I'm already, uh, long-term serving the public, and I wanted to offer you this also here where I live, to the township. I am also a little bit different, uh, I consider myself a modern immigrant. Most of your family, uh, immigrated somewhere down the road into the United States, and I was a little bit late, but I came, so, um, wanted to let you know about this, um, and, uh, we enjoy being also, uh, leader of a four-ages group here in, uh, Northfield Township, and we try to invest into the youth, and my interest is also to support a lot industry when it comes to, uh, find a home, and I think, uh, this is where Northfield Township invested quite a bit of money, and, uh, when you beat a horse, the dead horse start, dead all the time about, um, development, I think, uh, there's a lot of room for development in certain areas where we spend a lot, already a lot of money and nothing is much done. And I think with the master plan and all the good stuff we have already in place, we would be able to maybe turn something around for the township, uh, without big discussions about what not to do and how to do. So that's me, and, uh, I would like to be considered for the position. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
I'm going to hold this because it's better than leaning over. I'm David Perry, nine-four-one-one Earhart Road. Um, I'm going to recall, uh, I think it was a presidential election in the eighties or nineties, and I don't even know who the candidate was, but, um, he saw a sign on his campaign trail that said, "Bring us together." Piece of cardboard held up by somebody, and he said, "That's going to be my campaign slogan," and used it for that. And I think that's kind of what we're talking about here tonight. Uh, there's been a lot of contentious debate here, uh, over the months, you're no stranger to that. And debate is a very, very good thing. Um, contentious debate, um, happens sometimes, but it shouldn't be the norm, and I think we really need to get around that here. So, um, there are those who've spoken previously about candidates that they endorse for that. I, I do not know Jennifer Delisle, I've read up on her, uh, I've read her resume, I've read her letter, I've heard people speak about her who know her, and, uh, what I'm seeing is experience there. I'm also seeing the ability to be congenial and, um, debate but politely, and that's a very, very important thing we need to, we need to have here. Also, I'd like to, uh, recommend, um, Larry Roman. Uh, my experience working with Larry, uh, of course, on the other side of the table all the time, is that, uh, he listens, he listens, and that's huge. As another commentator just said, um, being listened to is very important, uh, and we appreciate that. Even when you don't vote our way, we appreciate that you listen, and if you vote our way, we really appreciate it. So that's what I'd like to do, is recommend those two people. Um, please do keep in mind, this is really important tonight. We need to get past contentious debate and have good debates. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
I'm Sally Lewis, six-oh-one-five Sutton Road. We purchased the farmhouse in Burns across the street in nineteen-seventy-two, so, uh, we've been here for four, almost forty-four years. As you consider the candidates wishing to be appointed to the Planning Commission, I'd appreciate it if you would look at the following qualifications. We need individuals who are courteous and respectful, professional and smart, ones who seek open communication, who have demonstrated an active interest and role in Northfield Township, and who will represent fairly all members of the township, but especially, we need individuals who are considerate, and they listen. Jennifer Delisle is such a candidate. Sam Iaquinto, in my opinion, and from personal experience, is lacking in these qualities, especially in the areas of respect in listening to others. The one time I addressed the Planning Commission with my voice quavering and my mouth dry and my stomach had butterflies in it much as it is now, I stood at this podium, and, and as I did, Mr. Iaquinto turned away and focused his attention the entire time I was speaking on his tablet or laptop, making odd grimaces and faces the whole time looking at his computer. The impression he gave me was that he was not even willing to feign interest in what I had to say. But I should be quick to point out that he has not signaled, singled me out. I really don't think he has any idea who I am. I and others have many times observed and heard rude comments and disrespectful behavior to others, including fellow members of the Planning Commission. Larry Roman does not act this way, and I strongly support his reappointment. Please carefully consider which candidates best represent all of Northfield Township. Individuals we are proud of, who are fair, honest, open, respectful, excellent listeners, and without hidden agendas. That's why I urge you to appoint Jennifer Delisle and reappoint Larry Roman. Thank you for your, your attention and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Suzie Wankowski, five-five-five-eight Hellner Road. Um, I would like to add my support to Jennifer Delisle. She's eminently qualified, professional, polite, experienced, and an excellent consensus builder. We are in need of some changes, as others have said, in the dynamics of the Planning Commission. She would be a terrific choice to fill one of the vacancies. I would also throw my support to Larry Roman, Craig Warburton, Jack Seacrest, Udo Huff, they all have unique qualifications that, again, I think would change the dynamics of the Planning Commission, help us to move forward, uh, in a better way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? You're up.
My name is Jack Seacrest, I'm one of the folks that expressed an interest in the Planning Commission. And I appreciate the opportunity to say a few things about me. I'm retired, my wife and I live on Nala Road. We're full-time residents of Northfield Township, of course. I went to, uh, high school in Detroit and, and University of Michigan. I do want to say upfront, I have no experience on a Planning Commission at all, don't claim to, I, I, I just don't have it. I'm a scientist by training, I, I was trained as a PhD chemist, and I spent a lot of years working on, or leading research groups developing new drugs, uh, for treatment of cancer and antiviral infections and that sort of thing, mainly at a not-for-profit research institute. My last seven years, uh, at that research institute were as its CEO and president. And, uh, it's about five-hundred-person organization, we do research not only in life sciences, but also environmental sciences and also engineering, uh, so a, a lot of different things. I have been elected the President of two international scientific societies, uh, I've served on dozens of committees at the local, state, national, and international level. I have experience in dealing with a lot of different situations, in providing satisfactory resolution to issues, in bringing people together, and in moving organizations forward. To do that, you've got to use teamwork and relationship building, and open communication, and fairness. I have a strong interest in the future of Northfield Township, I'm willing to work, and I'm enthusiastic about putting in the time to serve Northfield Township on the Planning Commission, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Sam Iaquinto, is this, are you going to allocate time?
Yes, this is only called to public.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the call to the public? Our next speaker?
Hello, David Gordon, fifty-five-fifty-eight Hellner Road. Wayne, welcome back. I would also like to throw my support to Jennifer Delisle and Larry Roman, as well as Craig Warburton, Udo Huff, and Jack Seacrest. When I was parking my car out back just now, I took a look at the side of one of the, uh, the police cruisers, and it says, "Courtesy, Respect, Professionalism." This is great, this is outstanding, and this is what I think we need on the Planning Commission. Jennifer's already shown, as has Larry, their ability to do all that on the, on the Planning Commission. I don't know if there's a representative tonight from McKenna and Associates, the new planner that you're, have on your agenda, to, uh, to hire tonight, um, because I was, I was interested to see if the board would have an opportunity to ask them some questions. They are the third. They are the third planner in six months that we've had brought out here. They are costing us 50% more than our previous planner on the retainer, monthly retainer, which is jumping the bill from $5,400 to $8,400. And on the hourly fee is jumping from around 90 to 125, which is about a 40% increase. So I have nothing against McKenna. I understand they're, they've got an excellent reputation. I wish them the best of luck in this community. But I'd be interested to see if we could ask them some questions. There was really no details in the memo from the Township manager about them, other than that it would be a slightly higher cost. The one thing I'd especially like to find out is, because I overlooked, I looked through the contract, there's nothing there about speaking to residents, and whether they're being, that would be permitted or not. Because I believe the last planner was dragged-
I'm sorry, my headphones fell off. What was that?
I said I was curious whether or not the planner would be permitted to speak to residents and build the township for them the way historically we've done it in this community. Because I see nothing in the, in the contract that speaks to that. As a matter of fact, the contract basically just says that they are speaking to officials, and that's about it. And lastly, the other item that I'd like to bring up is, the last agenda item is a, well, not the very last, board goals for the last year of your term. And I went through the last two pages of the packet tonight, which is the, the goals that were outlined in your workshop meeting. There's not one mention of preserving natural features, which has been identified over and over as the number-one priority in this community. So I would urge you to reconsider your priorities with that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker or anyone else?
Jim Nelson, 7777 Sutton Road. I'm going to begin with some boilerplate. I strongly urge you to appoint Jennifer Delisle to the Planning Commission. She's an independent thinker. She's a former Planning Commissioner. She's President of the Northfield Township Historical Society, and she's a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee. She would do a great job representing everybody in this township. I also support Larry Roman, Craig Warburton, Jack Seacrest, and Udo Huff. The voters, this is where it gets tougher. The voters of Northfield Township have entrusted you, the trustees, with the trustee position so that you can look out for our citizens. This requires thinking for yourself and following your own moral compass. In this case, it may require voting against the wishes of the supervisor. It may require nominating and supporting your own better choices for Planning Commissioners. If nothing else sways you, consider this. I mean, we've all heard about the behavior on the, on the Planning Commission. I think part of it's due to a testosterone overload. Women are over 50% of the township population, yet women on the Planning Commission are outnumbered five to two. Just for fairness, we need another woman on the Planning Commission. Anyway, now's my chance to say something good about Larry Roman. He's a taciturn guy, but when he does speak up, it's usually to dig the commission out of a rabbit hole. Recent case in point, at the public hearing for the Whitmore Lake Preserve, the commission got lost in the weeds speculating about how the county could avoid the requirement for paved parking lot. Mr. Roman, who's a former building official, located this section of the code requiring paving and pointed out to the commission that the code required paving only when off-street parking was required. In this case, off-street parking wasn't required, so neither was paving. It's pure logic Mr. Roman used, and he dug everybody out. With that, the Planning Commission was free to move forward and approve the Northfield Township Preserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for call to public? All right. Thank you to all of our speakers. This isn't on the agenda, but we always have it on there, the Board Member Comments. Is there any Board Member comments at this time? I'm sorry, go ahead, Wayne.
My comment is, I respect the ladies, but on this board, the ladies outnumber the men, so I think that's about a wash. And I don't agree with-
Wayne, can you speak up?
I don't agree with the dentist. War, I can't ever say his last name, Dr. War, whatever the name is. He's absolutely right that we're, but we have to remember, we went back, we're going back to this company and asking them to come. When they were in front of us, I think that we had a much better deal with them three months ago. But when we had to come to them back with a hand and hat in hand, they raised the price quite a bit. Thank you.
Madam Chair, is it the, your intent for the board to be able to discuss the individual Planning Commission members, or?
No, we, you know, I don't know why Jennifer's been missing putting this, you know, after call to public, if anyone wanted to respond to any of the comments at that time, we were putting it on twice, and I noticed it wasn't here. No, it's not for Planning Commission, but it is an agenda item that we'll get to next.
Are we, as trustees, going to be able to discuss the Planning Commission nominees?
Anything you want.
Yeah, anything you want.
I would like.
All right. Any other comments at this point? No? All right. That takes us to Correspondence and Announcements.
The only thing that I have for the board that came in this afternoon, and it's, I just want to make you all aware of it tonight, I think it's a discussion, frankly, that I'd like to have, and I haven't even talked with Tracy about this, so it's going to be a bit of a surprise, but it's a discussion I'd like to have a little bit as well at the Parks and Rec meeting. And that is, one of the properties that had been sold, or had been offered up on tax sale by the county treasurer, that went unsold, reverted back to us. And it was a very narrow piece of property. Mr. Dockett, you and I have spoken about this property on numerous occasions, so you know what I'm talking about. But it is a very narrow piece of property that is on the, next to the railroad tracks along Brookside Drive. Interestingly enough-
East, the east side of the, correct, the west side.
Correct. Not the side that is the, not the side that is the-
School property.
Correct. No, not the side that is the driveway to the house back there, that's near you. Okay? So interestingly enough, I got a, a request today by a bank who wants to buy it back for their client. So I basically indicated to the attorney that I'd like to have a conversation with him, but I think it's a long shot that we would want that property, or, well, I do think we, at some point, may want that property. I think it's, it's in the future that we may, in fact, and I don't know how far into the future that we may have value to that, but there's a, there is a potential value of that property related to a path that would connect the Riverwalk in the Jennings Athletic Complex. So there is a potential value to the township, which is why typically, you know, on some of these properties, if somebody wanted to buy them, it would be a no-brainer because we don't want them. But this particular property actually potentially could have some value to the township. So I'd like to have that conversation at the Parks and Rec Commission upcoming meeting, and then maybe have some debates at the Board of Trustees level, and obviously have a recommendation from Parks and Rec as to what their thoughts are as well. So nothing to do tonight, but wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Go ahead, Wayne.
I would like to go over that with the hour, because I'm confused if we're talking about where the, where the pump is, you know, on that property where the pump, where the county owns.
Yeah, the other side.
Oh, it's on, it's on the, it's in the subdivision?
We'll, we'll go over it later.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. Any other correspondence or announcements? No? All right. That takes us on to our first agenda item, which is the Planning Commission appointments. Every, everyone is here except for Manning, I'm sorry, hold on, let me get his name. He is sick this evening and could not-
Mannley, Ron Mannley.
Rob. Cannot make it this evening, he is sick. So we've set a time aside for anyone who is, I know we've heard some, from some of you already, you're still welcome to get up at this point, but just a quick introduction if you would like, and we do try to limit to a few minutes, if you don't mind. I'm going to go just in order of how they are presenting our packages, and number, the first one is Mr. I Quinto.
Samaya Quinto, 9876 Main Street. I would like to share a little bit about myself, since I have moved to Northfield Township in June of 1993. I am a resident, property owner, business owner for 23 years. I do own Max Marina and Dees Place, Max Marina Motorsports, and was co-founder of the current newspaper from 2004 to 2014. Volunteering for 23 years to help Northfield Township become a better place through the Chamber of Commerce. I was a board member for 20 years, Chamber of Commerce President for 10 years, Whitmore Lake Junior Football Commissioner and Board Member for seven years. Whitmore Lake Touchdown Club, I'm the Treasurer and Board Member for three years. DDA Founder and Board Member for five years. Michigan Pond Hockey Sports Charities, Founder and President. We are a group that raises funds to create scholarships for youth athletics. Board Member for Whitmore Lake Foundation for Educational Excellence, raising funding for education, for Whitmore Lake students. Founding and Board Member of the Greater Whitmore Lake Kiwanis Club, which is the morning club, started in 2004, raising over $20,000 a year for Whitmore Lake children. Member of the Parks and Recreation Committee from 2014 to 2016. Member of Living Water Church. I have been proud to serve as a member of the Planning Commission from 1995 to 2000 for five years. A member of the Planning Commission as well from 2011 to 2015. And I was elected a Board of Trustee Member from 2008 to 2012. I have attended MTA training for Planning Commissioners and many continuous education seminars for Planning Commissioners. I am dedicated to the Northfield Township community. I bring many years of experience and dedication to the township. I contribute knowledge from my past corporate experience of underground sewer systems, street mapping, et cetera. I feel that I am a very good person to work with. If indeed I was not to be involved in so many volunteer groups and boards for so many years, it would be difficult to hold appointed and elected offices for those positions. I am dedicated to Northfield Township and have been blessed and able to serve and would like to continue serving as a Planning Commissioner member. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next one in our package this evening is Larry Roman. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Larry Roman. I reside at 7159 Dollar. This is quite a different perspective here.
Scary.
Little bit. A little bit of background, my wife and I have lived here 21 years. We built our own home, raised two children, gone through Whitmore Lake schools. My work history, as most people have seen, I worked for the city of Westland. I retired after 20 some-odd years. I was a building official, a building inspector, a plan reviewer, an ordinance officer, so I've had quite a bit of experience dealing with people in tough situations. No one wants to see a building inspector. But, so I, I have a handle on how to deal with people in contentious situations. Unfortunately, maybe we've had our share a little more than we should have on the Planning Commission. Hopefully, that changes. Experience-wise here, I was appointed about the time Marlene Chockley was appointed. I don't know how many years, maybe 10. I did take a year off, which was 2012, when the master plan was actually adopted that year, but all the work up until that point, I had been involved in. I wish to continue doing that. Respect is a two-way street. I don't demand it, but I like to give it, and hopefully it leads us to productive avenues. So thank you for consideration tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next one in the package is Mr. Udo Huff. Do you, would you like to still come up and?
Sure. Thank you. Udo Huff, 6431 Whitmore Lake Road. I give you, gave you a small synopsis about Udo Huff, and I would like to give you a little bit of information why I would like to be a Commissioner on the Planning Commission, is that I'm an advocate really for the beauty of our township, because there are not many of you riding on horseback through, crisscrossed the township. I do, and I also use my carriage. So I know the nature of our township, and I also, I'm an advocate for our citizens here, living in our township, and then, what I explained already earlier, that I'm an advocate of bringing more profitable development for, of industry here into the township. So what I bring is international experience, project planning experience, building of projects. I lived and worked from Saudi Arabia to West Africa many, many years, and before I came here, I had a pit stop in Germany, and then I came straight to the US. So I'm very active, and, but on the other hand, you see me here a lot of times attending the meetings, most of the times I'm sitting and listening. So that is something I learned through my international project planning and project work experience, that before you really do a good move, you have to listen. And I think I practiced this, and I think it's now time for me to implement this for the township. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next person is Jennifer Delisle.
Hi, Jennifer Delisle, 7441 Spencer Road. I feel really embarrassed to come up here right now, because some people have said some really nice things, and when you're home with an eight-year-old, you don't get a lot of that. So, thank you. I went to University of Michigan Law School. I also graduated with a master's in Russian and East European Studies. I did master, worked in international corporate law for a number of years, doing mergers and acquisitions on multi-billion dollar deals. But then I sort of retired here to Northfield Township. And I have tramped through it, often with my son in the little carrier, doing the Huron River watershed. When they go through and look at the land, I've gone through swamps with him in there. And I've served on a number of committees with, for the township. I've been on the Planning Commission. I have tried to do what I can to make this a better place, and I'm really hoping that we make a change for the better. I don't see how this township is going to move forward until we start acting like the Hatfields and McCoys, and start acting like a professional place, where we welcome people, we do what we say we're going to do, we treat people with politeness and respect, and we get things done. And all the bickering that's been going on, it doesn't help, and it doesn't create a place where people want to invest. So let's make this a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our- Okay, our next, who's Craig Warburton?
My name's Craig Warburton, I live at 450 West Joy Road. My curriculum vitae is a little shorter than a lot of the people in this group. 25 years ago, my wife and I picked a piece of land that we really wanted to live on, and we cut the trees ourselves and built a house, raised two children, been very happy there ever since. My desire to participate with the Planning Commission revolves a lot around the way it functions today. It seems to be continually at war with itself. Much of the discussion and the squabbling seems pretty sophomoric. I don't understand lessening of standards. I'm very suspicious of anybody that finds it necessary to change their bylaws in just two years. And I look at the compromise and the size of the majority necessary to change the master plan as completely unacceptable. So, there you have it. I always thought I had a snowball's chance and a hot place at this position anyway, so I thought I'd just avail myself of the time to speak to you all. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, on to our next speaker. And that is from Ron Manley, who is not here this evening, he is sick and unable to make it. Our next one is Peter, and hopefully I can get this right, Surzen? Okay, so Peter's not here this evening, but we all have his letter of interest and resume. We, I know we have Jack Seacrest in the audience. Jack, do you have anything else I wanna add?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you. And our last one is Roger Paison? All right, so Roger's not here this evening, but we do have his information. Did anyone have any questions for any of our applicants? No? All right. Janet, are you coming back? She does? Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, why don't we take, why don't we take five? We're gonna take a quick break here. We might need a little more than five minutes, so if anyone wants to get up, stretch their legs, I'll make sure to call everyone back in enough time.
You wanna make a motion to take a 10-minute break?
So moved.
What?
Did you already make a motion?
No.
Let's, let's take a 10-minute break. I moved that we take a 10-minute break.
Everyone's supporting. We're gonna take an official 10-minute break. Those in favor, aye.
So you buy your letter. So I, um, I took the banana.
So the hot dog.
Slowly beginning. So. Oh, there was a thing on NPR. Plant it. Right. Yeah. They planted it. Could be later.
Well, the gentleman did call and say, how can I make? But definitely, I don't have. We are, yep. He actually called and said, how can I make, you know, how I can just go. And the truck. And, you know, everything, all the things to make. So, yeah, we should really follow our. And I agree with that. But, you know, I really didn't get much of an update because I didn't hear from the gentleman. Well, I mean, other than. Eighteen hours, you were gonna send that bill.
Okay, well, I wasn't.
Do you want me to really confuse my? I'll take it.
No, sure. We have that one topic. Would that be an ordinance?
Normally it would be an ordinance.
Well, sometimes you can.
The ordinance says every year you got a fee schedule. And so the ordinance would incorporate my reference. It's not like it's a lot of communities do.
Yeah, they dog like this. Twenty to thirty bucks and then it's bad.
It's derived from.
I got it.
A lot of they do a fee schedule, not an ordinance, but the ordinance has to say you can charge. And so I could say the fee should be set either way, you can annually buy the order and the fees. And so you can move it from there. But you're, a lot of communities do the fees all at once.
Well, I was hoping you'd correct. Turning it over.
Yeah, we'll turn it. I'll have Brad kick out wherever goes the ordinance. Or we'll do an ordinance amendment.
I wanna get that.
Should be a regulatory.
So I'm gonna try to send that. To get directions. Tonight or tomorrow. I'm not, I'm not.
You want some, good?
Yeah.
Where you going?
I'm not gonna take those.
Jet ski.
I might do that.
I bet a lot of times go to this all inclusive places now. Yeah. It's really fun. Get your own water system. That's the key, right?
Yes, yes, I already thought.
Had someone say. They put a wrong hotel. You gotta, you gotta get.
Sat.
They have their own water system. I, years ago, I got right on my way out. Because what happens is. To in my.
Yup.
Drink a Coke. In the ice. Just to reconvene.
Good evening, everyone, or sorry, everyone for the delay. Um, we're gonna reconvene our meeting, but we're gonna delay the planning commission appointments and take care of some of our other business while we wait for Ms. Chick and see how she's doing. So I need to make a motion to reconvene our meeting?
I would make a motion to reconvene the meeting.
Great. Okay, Thomas made the motion and Otto supported those in favor. Aye. Those oppose? Motion passes. So this will take us to our agenda item number two, which is the McKenna contract. We're gonna delay it and wait to see how Ms. Chick is feeling and then we'll make a decision what we're doing. I just, when, as soon as we hear. All right? But we can move the meeting along. All right? Um, so the McKenna contract, um.
Yeah, I'll, uh.
Sure.
Get us started on that, if that's okay. So as I've indicated in the past, I am recommending to the Board of Trustees to move forward and approve the Phil McKenna, not Phil McKenna, apologize, McKenna and Associates contract. Mr. McKenna and Senior Vice President Sally Hodges is in the audience. Uh, just a few details that I just wanna clarify for people's understanding based on some of the comments earlier, and that is, there was no change in the rate schedule. There was a, a, a decision that was made that Sally would be the most appropriate and best fit for the Planning Commission. The rate schedule of their individuals never changed. The, originally, the individual that had made a presentation to the Board of Trustees many months ago was, not to say that he's less qualified, but was at a lower experience level. Um, and so that's the reason for the increase in cost. So I just, I'm not shying away from the fact that there is an increase in cost, but I just wanna clarify that there's, there's no, been no, um, change in those numbers from the original bid. It's just that the individual that, um, that collectively, we all think is the best person to lead the Planning Commission or to, I shouldn't say lead, but to work with the Planning Commission is at a much senior level. In addition to that, uh, the only thing I would suggest is we've already spoken with McKenna and Associates about insurance and liability. That's been all cleared up, but because we didn't have, I wasn't able to print out the most recent contract that was sent, all I would ask is that you approve it contingent on legal review, so that we can make sure that that's all i's and dotted and t's crossed. Lastly, um, I am recommending to the Board that we move forward with McKenna and Associates in addition to the planning consulting relationship also with zoning administration. Mr. Wyland has indicated for some time that he would like that change to be made. He's been very patient with us in terms of, excuse me, in terms of when and how that occurs. But there's some staffing issues that he has in his office and he just feels that in terms of the time that he needs to dedicate to that, that they don't have that ability to do that anymore. Uh, Mr. Wyland would still stay on as our building inspector. He would still be the individual that deals with a building review, a plan review from a building perspective and a code perspective, but from the perspective of zoning administrator or zoning administration, that that would be transferred to McKenna and Associates. I actually think that that's the better way to go because it provides a little bit of continuity with respect to planning issues and with respect to zoning administration because as much as we, as much as we think that they, they don't overlap, in reality, they often do. Uh, and I can point to a number of examples of that. So I think that that's a good approach. Again, I'm recommending approval for the McKenna contract, and with that, I will leave it to the Board.
I would like to talk to McKenna. Will he come to the mic?
Yeah, he's here in the audience. Come on up if you wouldn't mind.
Howdy. I've been, I wanted to tell you that three months ago, all seven planning commissioners and two of us on the board voted you as our first choice. Nine of us wanted you.
Appreciate that.
Howard did not want you. Uh, Howard, uh, he said that we should have the other, the other company out. As he recommended that we have better and greater. So here we are ninety days later. You know, and we had a much better price from you last time. And now we're ninety days later, we're paying, we're still paying the last two planners that we have. We're getting bills, are still coming in from the other two. So I'd just like to, I mean, I hope we're gonna vote you in, even though it's fifty percent more. Howard can blow smoke all he wants, but, uh, anyway, I'd like that we all commute aboard, be the first one, but we should have had you three months ago when, you know, that's what the rest of the board wanted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. McKenna since he's here?
I don't have one for him.
Oh, you don't? Okay. All right. Anyone else? Oh, well, thank you for coming to the meeting this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
This is Sally Hodges, who will be your primary representative from our firm. And we're not insensitive. We've done, we do this in many, many townships and we're totally sensitive to cost. Uh, but the primary reason, the planner that you met last summer, uh, you know, he's small, he's taken up. He's contracted out to other communities, so that, that is a primary reason. Uh, and Sally has, Sarah is her name, but she calls herself Sally and so does everybody else. So, uh, but she's available and she lives nearby. She doesn't live in the township, she lives in the county. And, um, she's familiar with the area, works in several US twenty-three communities. We work in, um, in Wasno County. We also work in York Township and we corner Hamburg Township, Lion Township. So we look for, very much look forward to it.
Okay, Sally, you got a lot of work to catch us up for the last three months that we've been spending a lot of money and getting nothing done.
I've got a lot of listening and learning and catching up with you as well, but I'm very excited to be here and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Looking forward to it too. Go ahead.
Okay, so I, I do have a question because I, I mean, having the zoning administration piece as a part of this was a bit of a surprise when I got our packet. And, um, especially when you take into account that there, the, um, the retainer covers twenty-four meetings per year, which cover the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals and if they attend any of our Board of Trustee meetings. That's only two meetings a month, which means there's going to be a meeting charge somewhere. I know for the zone, the ZBA, we only meet four ti, we're required to meet four times a year, so it's going to be at least four times a year that they have to attend our board meetings. If that's what you're, if that's, if you're putting that as a replacement. So, because Kurt did attend the ZBA meetings. So I have a grave concern that it's only two meetings a month that the retainer is covering when we have actually at times five meetings a month.
I, I think that that's something that we could work out with McKenna and Associates. Um, and I would venture to guess that we could figure something out where we stick to the original retainer. Um, on the zoning administration piece, um, Mr. McKenna and, or McKenna and Associates has indicated that they would bill that at sixty dollars an hour. Not at the hundred and thirty dollars a rate.
Oh, no.
And, um, because obviously zoning administration is, is, is less of a professional, not to say that it's not a professional discipline, but it's, it's usually not billed at a consultant rate. I, Mr. McKenna, are you comfortable with adding the four meetings additional at the, at the ZBA level on the existing retainer?
It depends. We, I don't have, uh, and here's what it depends upon. I think it's a very good idea to have a planner as a zoning administrator. Uh, in my thirty-plus years of experience, I think that's very good. Because we're talking about the zoning ordinance. Uh, building officials very often, you know, their primary concern is with the construction codes. So it's, uh, and sometimes the zoning ordinance becomes an afterthought. So if you're serious about enforcing zoning ordinance, I think it's good to have a planner do it. I have, um, so, I have to move people around, uh, so I may bring in somebody who's a trained zoning administrator and building inspector. I'm not sure I'm gonna do that, and then I've got a couple of other people that I may be able to move who are, one's a planner and the other one is pregnant, so she's probably not gonna do it. So, uh, she's probably gonna take off. So, you know, I just can't say for sure, Howard, but I'm sure we can work something out. Uh, do you have two meetings every month?
Sometimes.
Planning Commission?
There's some cancellations, so there has been in the past cancellations.
So we got twenty-four meetings. I would think we'd be able to work. Sometimes there may be nothing on the agenda that we need to be there for. So I'd rather work it that way. I've gotta pay these people if they come out to do your zoning administration. Uh, that's a fairly labor-intensive high, I'm not familiar with how much you have. It's, I've only thought about it for the past day, and so I'd like to negotiate that.
And we, we initially don't anticipate needing a zoning administrator that has regular office hours. So the way, in fact, in, in truth, in fact, Kurt doesn't even have regular office hours. The way we handle zoning administration is that we receive a permit in the office, uh, some kind of use permit, a business wants to open, um, and that permit is filled out and sent to Kurt. Uh, and then a week or two later, uh, depending on the, um, how urgent it is, we get a response back from Kurt, either approved or denied. And then Jackie, as you know, that either goes in front of the ZBA or does not. Um, so I don't think we're gonna need, uh, at least initially, someone in the office with office hours. It is a nice idea to do that. Obviously, there's some additional cost to that. We'll just sort of have to evaluate that as we go forward.
This probably isn't the place to do it.
Yeah, I wasn't looking at somebody to be in the office. I was just more concerned with the meetings and being accountable to the meetings.
Yeah, I think we've got, I, with the twenty-four meetings, I think we've got enough leeway there.
Yeah.
I think, uh, Phil, maybe we could add a few extra and, you know, we could work something out.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, I think, I think I agree. I think we can do that too. And we'll go from there, but should be able to do that. And in other communities, uh, you know, we, we adjust.
So my other question is, what is the difference between what we were paying Kurt and the sixty-dollar hourly rate?
Kurt was getting fifty dollars an hour for some tasks and thirty dollars an hour for others.
Because we've just readjusted our fees. We reduced them. So this is going to add more expense on to us. I'm just letting the Board know.
All right, anyone else? I'll make, make a motion to authorize contract, uh, to authorize Howard to move forward with the contract as presented subject to the re-review of Paul Byrne's office. Thank you. Ingstrom motioned and Thomas supported. Those in favor?
I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Roll call, Kathy? Um, Wayne?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm not doing last, Bronn. Yes. Tock, yes. Ingstrom, yes. Westover?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, that takes us to number three, and Bill Wagner, um, has just stepped away, but he's already asked us to put this on the agenda. He would just like to add that there's, um, a new paid-on-call firefighter. And so I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Mike McNo as a paid-on-call firefighter. Ingstrom, uh, yeah, wait, well, Ingstrom, hold on. Ingstrom motioned and Westover supported. Discussion? What you got, Wayne?
I just wondered, is this person a resident of Norfield Township?
Yeah, um, I'm assuming he's a resident. He used to work here, he used to work on the fire department before. Uh, left, I think, to another state and has now come back.
So he won't need training and all that stuff?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I was getting at. Thank, thank you very much.
All right.
Now, we're gonna finish the vote.
Yeah, um, so those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those oppose? Motion passes. That takes us on to our first discussion item, and that's the sewer ordinance memo.
Are we gonna be able to come back to our, this, we're gonna have a?
Yeah.
This is our open meeting and, and how are we gonna work it? I mean, is this the way it should be done?
I think we've all agreed that we just, you know, addressed the, uh, number one, the agenda item, the Planning Commission, before the meeting and this evening.
There's, there's no prohibition on changing any of the order, voting last, voting first, you're fine.
Okay, or just, well, I just wanted to know because.
Yep, yep, you're good.
We have two voting discussions.
Yeah. Yeah. But we're just gonna be a little flexible this evening, all right?
Thank you.
All right. So the sewer ordinance memo, um, Howard, do you have any comments? Or I know we have Tim here in the audience or on the, at the table here. Uh, Tim, you have anything to share? Anyone have questions for Tim?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Can we, before we get there, can we just kinda go over a few things?
Absolutely.
Then maybe, uh, Mr. Ruble come up and give some. Then maybe Mr. Ruble will come up and give some thoughts and then we could open it up for questions, is that, is that an okay process?
I'm okay with, Wayne, you all right with waiting?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So, Mr. Ruble has prepared a memo for you. Brian and I and Tim had some, and Mr. Burns' office, had some conversations sort of prior to the preparation of the memo. Obviously, as you have heard us say in the past, we have a number of issues that we need to address, legis, not legislatively, but from a policy perspective through some ordinances prior to the implementation of the Whitmore Lake Sewer Assessment District. Just as a side note, the bonds did sell today. There was a slight discount on the bonds of about $11,000, which was discounted from what the original projected interest rate was going to be. So, we only had one bid, but it was a good bid. So, that's a good thing. And, so the project continues to move forward. The next step of the project is to talk about some of the policy issues that we need to address. Certainly grinder-pump standards. The things that I think we'll have a lot of conversation on and debate on tonight is connections, the fee for anybody connecting in that is not in the district. Obviously, we talked about the only way somebody would really be able to connect in the district is if they connected on a gravity line, what that fee would be, what the connection timeline is, and some other type of sewer-type engineering issues. So, with that, if I, if I may, I'd like to ask Mr. Ruble to kind of go over things and lead us in that discussion.
Welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having me. So, I grouped the items of discussion into, I guess, five roughly, two on the front page and three on the back. And the first one is fairly technical. The system, as it was designed, will use grinder pumps to inject wastewater into the sewer main. And it's fairly typical with the communities that use those grinder pumps to standardize the pump. Mr. Hardesty's staff will be responsible for maintaining those pumps in the future. And by having a standard design, he'll be able to better stock parts, be more familiar with the repair of those devices. So, the communities that have implemented these have generally adopted a standard pump. And so, I guess that would be adopted by ordinance, what, at least, I guess you would, you would authorize Mr. Hardesty to, to keep that, that standard, to develop that standard. I, not sure I'd want to put a model number into the ordinance because things do expire and change, but at least Mr. Hardesty would then have the authorization to have a standard in a township. The other related topic would be the workmanship of a new grinder pump installation. And what I mean by that is, if we standardized the pump, there is some workmanship concerns about the installation of that pump. And many communities do adopt or keep a list of pre-qualified contractors. The contractor would submit their qualifications, Mr. Hardesty would review those qualifications to make sure that it was a reputable contractor, they had experience installing similar type of equipment. And then, a property owner who wanted to add a pump later on would be asked to use a contractor on that list. That would just ensure that whatever pump is installed, it is of a, of a quality of installation that, because the township will maintain that in the future, that you're happy with. So, I think all we're looking for tonight is some direction, if these are good ideas, if alternate ideas, so that we can draft an ordinance over the next two weeks and, and review that in February, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the, I don't, I had to step out for just a moment. I think the items that you might want to just kind of give us a little bit of feedback on or give some thought on, and obviously under future connections, you know, there is a possibility or a chance that somebody connects into the district that's not part of the district. We obviously has indicated that the district was designed only for the properties there. And the reason, and so what we're saying is, the only connections that can be connected into it would be on the gravity portion of that section, because that's the only place that there would be any capacity. So, wanted to point that out to you. Again, we're creating a policy limitation to make sure that the capacity of the district is in fact for the district. So, that's why that is there.
Most of the grinder pumps are on the south end, is that correct?
The most, it's all force main. The grinder pumps are throughout the entire district. There's one little section of gravity line that runs across the property.
Every lot's on a grinder.
Every lot's on a grinder pump. Okay? So, the only theoretical way that somebody could-
Right.
-connect into that district is if they connect it into that small gravity section. Otherwise, they're connecting somewhere outside of the district.
Well, you have to have gravity, it has to be gravity all the way then, I mean, how, how can they, where do the pumps go to? They go to the gravity feed, don't they? They get pumped to the gravity feed.
I don't, I don't understand the question.
The, the pipe that is parallel to Whitmore Lake Road-
Yeah.
...is designed to be a three-inch force main. Then they collect at Whitmore Lake at the low, at a low spot, and they, they head east in a gravity pipe on private property, attained in easement.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, it's that east-west.
Go back by the expressway and go back north, down, north, there.
That's correct.
The, the other area that, that we might just want to have some clarification on is, we're, and Cam and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, we are recommending that, that we modify the duration to require somebody to connect in to one year. Okay? I know that that-
I understand, I don't think that's fair, I mean, if somebody, I don't want to keep button in, but somebody has a lot, somebody, somebody has a lot, a lot of that, there's nothing on them properties. So, there's no buildings on them. So, you're telling me, first of all, I don't understand, if it's $3,000 for the REU, and then I see another one here for 30, for 3250, is it, is it going to be, right now, if you want to hook into our sewer system, it's $3,200.
3550. 3550?
That's correct.
I thought it was 3250, okay. So, so are these people paying 65?
No.
Why, why have we got a 300?
So, if somebody conceivably was going to connect into that gravity section that was not part of the original SAD and not part of the original REU calculation, in addition to the 3550, they'd have to pay an additional $3,000, which would total $6,550.
That's what I want to know, okay.
Yep.
And I, and I, and I don't see why they would have to pay when they got vacant property. I, I don't understand that.
No, that's not what we're saying. We're saying that if they have an existing house with a septic system, we're, we're asking, would you like, like a deadline for which they would be required to abandon the septic system and connect to the new source?
Yeah, well, somebody's got a $20,000 engineered field they just put in, and we're going to ask them to, to abandon that after they paid all that money? I, I don't think that's fair, my, that's my opinion.
So, so Kurt-
And these grinder pumps, there's only two kinds of grinder pumps, the ones that fail and the ones that are going to fail. I mean, it's a bad deal, grinder pumps are a bad deal. Thank you.
So, we're giving them right now only 90 days of notification?
That's the way you're ordering.
And you're asking, should we extend it out to one year?
Or, or you have the option to direct us to do something different?
Well, I don't think we should make people do anything.
This is, this is-
Or to not do anything.
Well, I don't, I don't think we should force people to, to abandon a $20,000 engineered field. So, I mean, they're going to pay the footage when it goes by, they're going to pay for their footage, right? So, so why do we have to turn around and punish them by making them hook into the sewer system when they got a good system? That's my opinion.
From, from an engineering standpoint, and I, I don't have any concern in which direction you go, from, from an engineering standpoint, there are maybe a few considerations to, one, a duration to connect. And I, I did jot those down from our discussion. And those would be two that I can come up with pretty readily. The, a grinder pump system does flush itself better if there are more connections to it. So, the township's maintenance would be a little bit less if you have more customers connected. So, it, it will operate a little bit better.
But I think in this instance, there's only one, one homeowner out there that would have, would be considered in this, right?
No.
Or is there more?
Not more.
No, I meant as, as having a septic field and, and that.
There's about five right now.
Five, okay.
Well, I think one's a home and I think four might be businesses.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about, is a home.
The home. The, the other, the other reason that many communities put a timeframe to connect, and it has to do with capital fees and maintenance fees. The, the assessment that was made pays for the capital cost of the sewer. The cost for Mr. Hardesty's crew to go out and operate it, ensure it's clean, come from the quarterly bills. So, I, I believe the logic that communities put a deadline is so that you are generating income to maintain the system. Just, just want to point that out as a consideration.
I have no consideration for the person who paid $20,000 to have a, a brand-new engineered field, though. I don't get it.
Do we have anything in there discussing that, you know, if, if it was allowed that they could just hook up, you know, whenever, no timeline on it? But that, no repairs or replacements? You know, any repairs to any septic's if it needs to be done? Do we have any of that in any of our ordinances? If someone, if a fail, if a system fails, septic system?
I, I believe that is, I, what you may be asking me is if, if there's a sewer adjacent to the property, the septic fails, I can't recall if it's a county or state requirement, but-
They'd have to hook up or they should hook up.
I thought it was more on a local level.
Yeah, the county will not issue a permit to rebuild the septic.
That's, that's county, I, I can vouch for the fact that that's county regulation.
And if it was an engineered field, it's 20 grand or 30 grand, so for, for 60-some-hundred, I think they would be glad to hook in.
Right, but sometimes there's a small minor repair, you know, in the tank or something that, you know, you could, your field is fine, but, but, so that's county regulated, right?
Correct.
Anyone have any, any more questions for Brian or anything? I like all the ideas, I'm just still torn on, you know, the, the timeline of when someone is to connect.
I, I understand both sides of the, the argument, I really do.
And since I had to step out for a moment, so I know you guys were looking for some direction, do you need anything from us right now or, you know?
We could certainly write it the way it's written and you'll have an opportunity to revise it in February.
Well, I, I don't see any argument against standardization and some of these kind of technical aspects to it.
Yeah, I think they're all great.
Yeah, I, I would like some time, obviously, to think about the, specifically the, the deadline for tapping in.
Yeah, that's the only thing I need to discuss or think about a little further. But yeah, if you want to start work, I have no problem.
Thank you, I, I agree with you, I mean, because it's, it's pretty hard for, I mean, I, I can understand when it goes by their property, they have to pay the footage, I can understand that, but to force them to do the other, to force the residents to do that, I cannot buy, thank you.
Tim, do you have any input? No? So, I think it's safe to say, Brian, that yes, please go ahead with, with the ordinances and they maybe leaves it, I'm sorry.
Does it make any difference to you, Tim, if they hook in or not?
Other than the, the fact that Brian talked about the maintenance issue, the other fact, well, there is one other item, if they put the grinder pump in and they don't hook in for five years, that pump is going to be ruined. So, that is something that we will have to deal with, is take those pumps out of there and make sure that those pumps don't just sit there and go bad. That would be a waste of money for the township also.
Why, we're not paying for them, they're, they're paying for their pumps.
The pump's going to be, no, but we're, we will be paying for all of the repairs to the pumps. And if the pump's sitting there for a year, the homeowner's not going to pay for it if it's ruined.
Why would we have to put it in if they're on their, if they're on their own?
That's, that's my point, is we wouldn't, we wouldn't leave it in there, we would pull it out. You want the can that the pump sits in and plays.
Yeah, 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 right. And, and if they didn't hook in for five years, it might be a whole lot better machine, five years from now than there is today. Thank you.
So, I think everyone's in agreement that, yes, everything but the timeline for hookup is the only thing that we need more time to think about.
Okay, I'm sorry, can I just say one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me, this ordinance, the 90 days has been an ordinance for a number of years, but I know from past experience with the old superintendent, we, we have allowed people a year to hook in, in all the gravity systems around the lakes.
All right. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Brian?
Does the prohibited items, that actually was a topic way before the SAD was discussed. It's actually a, a national problem with these wipes being flushed down toilets, they clog pumps, Mr. Hardesty has to rebuild pumps way too frequently. And many, many communities are adopting very similar policy against those, so.
Well, it's on our, it's on every bill that we send out to, our sewer bill that says, don't put them in there.
Education is one of them.
Yeah, it goes all over the, everybody in the township gets a sewer bill, says right on there, don't use the wipes or don't flush them.
Thank you for your direction.
All right, thank you. The next one is the Verizon cell tower, but I know Howard and Paul Burns probably have some comments on that. So, do you want to jump to, sorry to jump all over tonight, you guys. You want to do number three? Oh, here they come, sorry. We're just going, getting to the Verizon cell tower. And we were going to jump, but you guys are here now, so.
I'll, I'll get us started quickly. So, I'm going to start off with answering a potential question that many board members may have, which is, why is it back on the agenda? So, it's back on the agenda because Verizon Wireless presented a new, different proposal. You know, arguably, that's, you know, required and legally required of me to bring it back because it is a different contract proposal. And so, that's why it's in front of you, is because it's a different proposal. They are requesting, or excuse me, they are offering additional revenue in kind of, in the, in the way that if there are any co-locators that are on the tower, then those co-locators in the new lease would be required to negotiate directly with the township. That potentially could be a significant increase in revenue. They do have, they did indicate that they would be taking the annual rent escalator down to 2%. They would also be reducing the area from 50/50 to 40/50. The other thing about the co-locators having, required, having to negotiate directly with the township is not only does that represent the potential of significant new revenue, but it also provides us additional legal control because now we're negotiating directly with those that are requesting to be on the tower. I did recommend approval of this last time, I do recommend approval of it tonight. It's not obviously on the agenda for voting, but I do recommend approval. I know that Chief Wagner is in favor of it as well and recommends approval. We both feel that the dollars are needed, we would be allocating those dollars to the fire department and, and for some infrastructure improvements, 25% of those dollars would come back to the general fund, 75% of those dollars would stay with the fire department. And so, I do support it. With that, I certainly understand that there was some concern, and I leave it to debate.
Go ahead, Wayne.
I don't think there's much of a debate. The last time we had this on here, can you hear me?
Yep.
Last time we had this on here, this board said, we didn't want it, we, we turned it down flat. And Howard, and we said, and Howard told us, they'll never come back, this is it, they're going to make this, they're- going to make this, they're going to make this presentation, if you don't take it, we're not going to get it." Well, I still, I'd like to read this to you from our attorney. This is a letter from our attorney. "In the general, it is generally our recommendation that the township should have at least an equal right determined, terminated an agreement with New Power," I guess that's still New, I mean, I guess Verizon, but, says New Power, excuse me, "is willing to agree to offer the identical rights to terminate." Okay, so in other words, our lawyer's telling us, "They don't think it's good for us to go into a contract where we don't have the same rights that they have." There's three different, there's three different paragraphs in this lease. It is a bad, bad deal, folks. I don't know about you, but they want to tie this up for 20 years. My Verizon bill has more than doubled in the last three years, and they want to give us 2%, and they want to tie it up. It just, we're going against our attorney's advice. It's just crazy for us to even think about this. Please think about it before you decide that we're going to go ahead with this contract, that's nothing good in it for us. And they can go up there to a private individual and get it if they want. And if this money comes in, it's not Wagner's money, this is township property. Why is the $360,000 going to the fire department? If the fire department wants more money, let them go for millage. Why should we give them $360,000 over the next 15 years, 15 or 20 years? That's just not fair, in my opinion, so that's what I got to say about it. We voted it down last time, the contract has not changed.
I was in favor of it last time, and you had to abstain, right?
Yeah, I'm abstaining from any comment or vote on this topic, because it's a direct professional conflict for me.
Well, yeah, I don't know why you would be in favor of it, but you certainly have a vote, but I think most of us were not, and we dropped.
Could we, could we have an opportunity to address some of the concerns?
Absolutely.
Because I know there were some concerns from the letter stated with the township attorney. Also, we just kind of wanted to give a bigger picture. Do you want to address the concerns? Okay, so, my name's Bob Prisbilo, I represent Verizon Wireless, this is John Crane, he's an attorney for Verizon Wireless. We have worked for probably about our part of two years, working with both your attorney and with the township supervisor on this, on this, I'm sorry, manager, I'm sorry, the township manager, I apologize. We, Verizon Wireless is a big picture, we need a new facility in the Spencer Road, North Territorial Road area of the township. Our network demands and the quality of service and the coverage demand a new facility in that area. In searching that area, there are a number of private property owners, like Mr. Dockett mentioned, there are also, I also found a, the 18-acre parcel that the township owns that the fire station is on. It is always our priority, when we have to build a new facility and enter into a ground lease, to enter into that with the jurisdiction, with the township, so that instead of one individual private owner reaping the benefit, the financial benefits of the lease agreement, that if it's with a township or a city, then all of the community reaps those benefits. So we have had the discussions with the township, you have the lease agreement in front of you, the financial terms are very favorable to the township as compared to what we would work out with a private property owner. The concerns from the township attorney in terms of the termination, as the lease stands now, it is essentially a 25-year lease, it's a five-year lease with four or five-year automatic renewals, and that would be an agreement that we would have with any property owner, and we would not, we would not budge on that. But working with the township, understanding the concerns of your manager, we agreed to give the township an opportunity to terminate after the second renewal term, so essentially making it a 15-year deal, a 15-year lease agreement, where we can either renegotiate or terminate. Those are the minimum amount of time that we, as Verizon Wireless, could enter into an agreement. Each one of these facilities costs a half a million dollars to build and to get into operation. So imagine if you would, you know, we have hundreds of these things around, almost 1,000 in the state of Michigan, so imagine if every cell site we had had the ability to terminate anytime they wanted, the network would be impossible to operate, every year we'd be moving sites, and from an economic standpoint, it just, it wouldn't be feasible. So we provided the best possible termination rights that we could to the township, in terms of them being able to opt out after a 15-year deal. But that is, that is the logic behind us needing a 15-year deal, it's because a cellular network works like a jigsaw puzzle, and each piece of that puzzle is intricate to the rest of the puzzle, so as soon as you start moving pieces around, you know, it compromises the integrity and the operation of the network. So we need to have some sort of minimum time commitment for the network, so that we can design around and operate the network. Another one of the issues in the attorney's letter was the right of first refusal. We narrowed down, our typical standard right of first refusal is that anytime the property owner wants to go and sell the property, we as the, as the lesssee, Verizon Wireless, has the right to match any offer they have, and if we don't match it, then they're free to sell it. So we have shaved that all the way down to allow for any transfer to a government entity, but we have the right of first refusal for any non-government entity that wants to operate a wireless-like facility. And the reason that's in there is what's happening in today's wireless market or world out there, if you will, is that there are financial companies that are going around and contacting our landlords and buying out our lease agreements underneath us, okay? And then they're, so they would come, so for instance, if we entered into a lease agreement with you, a company like Black Dot, or there's a few others, will call the township and say, "Hey, we'll give you $250,000 cash right now if you sign over all the rights to your lease agreement to us." And we, as a lesssee to you or any of our property owners, we have a problem with that. We feel like we've developed a working relationship and a business relationship with our property owners, we didn't, we didn't sign up to be a lesssee to these financial companies, so we have put into our lease agreements protection to protect us from that. That's the only reason that provision is in there, and it's very scaled down, Mr. Burns can speak to it, it's very scaled down to handle that particular scenario. The last issue that was brought up there is an assignment issue, and the fact of the matter is, is we need to have some sort of assignment rights on our site. There's mergers and acquisitions all the time, you've seen it with MetroPCS and T-Mobile. If someday if AT&amp;T wants to buy Verizon Wireless, you know, we can't have a $50 billion deal tied up between one cell site and Northfield Township, where we need to get consent for an assignment of a lease agreement on a cell site. So that's the only reason, the assignment there, and again, that's been paired way back to provide for the minimum protection that we need. We need to get a facility in this area, we will construct a facility in this area, we certainly respect the decision of the township and the board, if you decide you don't want to move forward with this lease agreement, we have potential private owners immediately in the area that will lease space to us. We just feel like it would be a terrible tragedy to the township to not want to enter into a lease agreement, and for us to build the tower on a private property owner next door, when the township can reap the benefits. Do you want anything?
The only thing, I'm John Crane, I'm a civil engineer, a land use planner, and also an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless, I'm from Rochester, Michigan. But in any event, the right of first refusal is limited only to those companies that are buying, that are buying up leases, it's not a general sale. So if you want to sell it to the Heroine Parks Recreation or something of that nature, we would not have that right of first refusal. It's only for the entities that are buying, the investing houses that are buying up the leases. The last is the assignment, we have paired that way back, and the only time that we can assign without your consent would be if our company, all the major assets of our company are sold, so that there's a merger or acquisition. As Bob said, there's, I think it's about 1,100 in Michigan now, but if you can imagine if Verizon Wireless was bought by AT&amp;T or vice versa, and we had to go to all 1,100 people and get their consent to make the sale and transition of all our assets, we will not have the right to sell it to some third party or an investing house, just like we're trying to look at your deal. And you do have the right to sell to the investing house, we just get the right to match the offer, and it's a reasonable time, and so on and so forth. 15 years is, actually, that's pushing the envelope for the short period. We protect, again, for the change in technology, that's the only time we can envision, we haven't taken a cell tower down, but if there's a change in technology, rather than be locked in for the next 10 or 15 years, we want to have the right to remove the site, restore the property, and put it back in position, and return it to you, and pay in rent at that time. I'll answer any questions you have, Bob is here. If you still want to say no, say no, and we'll move on. But we were asked by our management to take one last stab at it, we talked to Mr. Burns' office, Bradford, Maine, we sent in January 11th or so another iteration with those reviews, the revisions that we have made, and it's a, basically, it's a simple yes or no. We'll answer any questions you have. I understand Mr. Dockett's very valid concerns, if those are truly the board's feelings, so be it. Thank you very, very much.
Wayne?
We have less than a year for us to be on this board. For us to make a 25-year agreement, for, maybe the next board in a few months is going to want to have a Parks and Recs out there, we have an 18-acre piece there. Why, I just cannot bring myself to make a vote for something for the next 25 years for $18,000 a month and maybe, and tie this property up for that long.
If I may, sir, it's $1,400, and it still is long-term, but it's 15 years, you are correct.
Well, not according to, it can be 25 years.
It could be 25 years.
Okay, so, I mean, I can't, I can't, I'm not an attorney, but I can read what our attorney told us. Our attorney says, they don't recommend that we take this type of offer, so I would think we would be very stupid to go against our attorney's, what he tells us, so. I don't, I'm not for it, and I don't see any reason why we should do it, tie up our property out there. And then the next step is Wagner and Howard have gotten cahoots, they want to get the $18,000, the money per month for the fire department. Well, if the fire department wants more money, let them go for millage, why should we give them $360,000? It's just unfair, folks.
Because the fire department needs it.
Well, you guys are addicted to other people's money, Howard. That fire department has never been, stayed in budget since Wagner's been here. We give them between $25,000 and $50,000 every year on the general fund, because he can't stay in budget. Now, we're going to give them this $300, whatever it is, extra? No. What about the rest of our, what about the rest of our other entities in the township? Why would they get some of this money? Why would the fire department get it? Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Jackie.
Okay, so to add, I don't want to add any more to what Mr. Dockett just said, but just to add to it, I think there are two different issues. I think that this is, the contract itself is one issue, and determining what happens to that money is a different issue, and that is still something that the board could and should decide on.
Well, it seems to me like, excuse me, I'm not, but Howard and Wagner's got that money already earmarked.
Well, it's still a board decision.
Yes.
So, Mr. Dockett, it's still a board decision.
Jackie's 100% right. If you all decide, if you all decide that you go against, we've made a recommendation to you as to where the money should go, and that we think that this is a good.
I don't think much of your recommendation, Howard.
I know that, Mr. Dockett, welcome back, by the way. We think that this is a good contract for the township, and we both.
Who's "we"? The attorney doesn't think so.
Mr. Wagner and I think this is a good thing for the township, and we're making a recommendation of where those dollars goes. Ultimately, as you all know, the Board of Trustees is the deciding factor on any contract and where any dollars go.
The other question that I have has to do with the limited right of first refusal. Would you, and I know this is negotiating, and it's really between Mr. Burns and Verizon to discuss, but I would think, you know, you made the comment that it really only pertains to like businesses, your competitors, would you object in having a disclaimer in this that that's all it pertains to? Because it may be a time when we would want, I don't, we have never discussed about that firehouse or anything, but there may be a time that somebody would want to have it, another governmental entity or something like that. So I would want it to have it open that, yes, I understand that you want to keep it away from your competitors, and I get that, and I appreciate that, and I would probably put that in my contract, too.
Right, and it actually, it is in, the right of first refusal states it's only a non-governmental entity that operates a like business, I forgot what the exact verbiage, but it's a non-governmental entity that operates a similar wireless-type business. So any other, any other person, entity, government that you wanted to sell the property to, you have that right to do so. And I would, I certainly don't want to speak for Mr. Burns, but perhaps he could talk about what they're, I don't think that their position, at least talking with Brad Maines, the last meeting we had, their position wasn't a recommendation of denying the contract, their letter was to bring out concerns of what they normally wouldn't consider optimum turns for the township, and those are three issues that the board should consider, but I don't think that what they're saying is that you shouldn't enter into this contract, those are just three areas of concern.
What they're saying, did you read the contract? Did you read it? What did you say? No?
Yes, I have seen it.
Okay.
I have one more question. I know that we have a farmer that farms that land back there, and if we do put up this tower, does he, you know, it may be a stupid question, but I still feel that he may still want to farm that land, would he still have the opportunity to farm that land around the tower?
Yes.
Okay.
If I could add just one small thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is a piece of property that is 50 feet by 40 feet, 2,000 square feet, with a driveway, and we're building, and you're getting, Mr. Dockett, and I think it was your number, I haven't worked out the numbers on it, somewhere around $375,000?
$360,000, I think.
$360,000 over a period of time. That's pretty good money, but I, again, it's your call, you're the board, thank you.
$336,000 over 20 years.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. Howard, was this just a discussion item, or are you looking to have this voted on this evening?
No, it's a discussion item only, the only thing I would ask is just a general consensus, if it goes on the agenda in two weeks for a vote, or if it does not.
I would like to see it back on the agenda, please.
I would not like to see it.
I would love to see it.
Kathy? On, on the agenda? Okay, it'll be on the agenda in two weeks.
Great, thank you for your time this evening, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I know we have lots of people here in our audience waiting, and I was able to check, and unfortunately, Ms. Chik is not coming back to our meeting tonight, but she did tell Mr. Wagner that she would like us to still move forward, if everyone's in agreement with that, on our planning commission appointments. I'm voting. No objections?
That's what Ms. Chik said?
Per Mr. Wagner.
Then that's fine.
Correct, Bill?
I believe you said that she wanted you to continue on?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what she told me.
Okay, all right, so instead of holding everyone up for the rest of our So, instead of holding everyone up for the rest of our meeting, I will go ahead and go back to our agenda item number one, which is the planning commission appointments. I sure hope Janet's going to be feeling better. I'd like to thank all the people that came forward and are willing to serve. I mean, very impressive resumes. And I take these appointments very seriously and have given it plenty of thought. I value the diverse cross-section of our community when looking at individuals to serve on planning commission. The planning commission is to have a diverse group of people representing all areas of the township. Our current members hold that diversity. Four of our current members are in the agricultural area. Both of our current planning commission members, Mr. Roman and I Quinto, have both brought different skill sets and life experiences from within our community during the time they have served on the planning commission and have done an excellent job of serving. When giving this decision serious thought, it occurred to me that when Ms. Chocley's appointment was up, we did not open it up for any new members and just reappointed her. Since we have two members who want to continue to serve on the planning commission, they should receive the same treatment. With that being said, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Larry Roman to another term of the Northfield Township Planning Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2018. This does require a roll call vote. I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Instrom motion and auto-supported roll call vote. Tracy, Thomas?
This is Larry?
Larry?
Yes.
Auto?
Yes.
Westover?
Yes.
Instrom, yes. Dockett?
Yes.
Bronn? I would also like to make a motion to appoint Sam Iaquinto to another term of the Northfield Township Planning Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2018. And once again, another roll call vote. Thomas?
Discussion? I'd like to make a case for Jennifer Delisle. I served with Jennifer on the planning commission. She was an excellent public servant. I've also served with her on the Parks and Recreation Commission. She's been excellent there. I think she's eminently qualified and I would urge this board to hold off and not elect Mr. Iaquinto with the hope that we would get to vote on Jennifer Delisle.
I have a motion forward and I appreciate your comments. Do I have a second?
Can I also make a comment? I would also like to second what Tracy has-
You need a second. What happened?
I have a motion. Thank you. So, Instrom motioned and Bronn supported. We have further discussion?
All right. I would like to second what Tracy had said. I worked with Jennifer Delisle on the Blue Sky Commission. While Jennifer and I don't always see eye to eye, she has always approached things with respect and she listened. And we always came to a consensus. She's a very hard worker. And I'll tell you, without, without her dedication, we would have not had the marketing analysis that we now have in Whitmore Lake. So, I just wanted to put that on the table.
Great. Thank you. Any other further discussion? Requires a roll call vote? Thomas?
No.
Auto?
No.
Westover?
Yes.
Instrom, yes. Dockett?
Yes.
Bronn? Thank you. Thank you for continuing and serving and another term for you guys. Thank you. Okay, well, that takes us, where are we now in the-
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
So, Parks and Rec master plan. So, the Parks and Rec Commission worked for probably a year, right, Trace? Maybe more. Really diligent planning work for the last year to create a Parks and Rec master plan. Let me just say, because it's getting late and I realize that, just 30 seconds as to, I think, what the fundamental strategy of the document is. It's to recognize that the Parks and Rec Commission is, at this moment, mostly a kind of grassroots, all volunteer group that really wants to advance recreation and parks in the township. We don't have any dollars. And so, to that extent, we don't have a lot of institutional capacity. I will say, though, as a group, I would argue that the Parks and Rec Commission has been, has been one of the most effective groups in the township. Now, it's not to say that they've done more than any other, but it's to say that they had no money, sort of a very loose volunteer kind of structure. They built a park that has been exceptionally well-received in this community, which is the Dog Park. They did amazing planning work as a group in terms of the master plan. And they've really started engaging in the thought process of what's next. The master plan for Parks and Rec really is an acknowledgement of that baseline and to say that, you know, hopefully, over time, over a five-year period, we can build that capacity over time and start thinking about new and new projects, potentially more impactful projects as well. We are in the public hearing phase of that process. There will be official public hearing in two weeks at the next board meeting. Be an advertised public hearing. We hope to get comments from the community. We will be sending it out to all the organizations. I'll try to get it as kind of widely distributed as possible. I know Marlene is in the audience. I expressed already to Marlene, I know that there's some differences of opinion on the planning commission on this, but I personally have expressed I'd love for the planning commission to at least review it and make comments to it. I think that that's frankly appropriate and it would be a shame if it didn't happen, in my personal opinion, and other groups. We'll have a public hearing in two weeks, take whatever information we have, hopefully kind of integrate whatever comments that we get back, and then we'll be submitting it to DNR for their approval. With that, I will stop talking and hopefully you guys have taken a look at it or maybe you love it and we don't need to talk about it or have any thoughts, questions, concerns, whatever the case may be.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Wayne.
I am not opposed to the township having a Parks and Rec department, but it should be funded by millage, voted on by the people of Northfield Township. Where's the $10,000 coming from?
That's not on this agenda right now. We pulled that, we pulled that off the agenda.
Oh.
The Parks and Rec-
I'm sorry.
The commission met Thursday, last Thursday, and we decided that that still needs a lot of work.
Okay, so we're going to talk about this later?
No, we're talking about the master plan that's online, which is the big gigantic, not gigantic, but multiple page.
No, we got it last-
We got it several meetings ago. It's also online.
Okay. All right.
I anticipate, I'm not, I'm not going to mislead this board. That proposal's going to come back to you at some point, but it's going to look different than that.
Okay. All right.
So-
Well, I just, my, I just put in my two cents that I-
I understand.
I hate to see these things start, it's like, I know I'm going to catch hell for saying this, but it's like our senior center down there, you know, they don't, if they had the village like our library has, you know, they would not be taking over $100,000 of the general fund, you know, to fund them. So, I would like to see this happen, but I would like to have the people say, yes, we're interested in this. Yes, we're interested in paying a one mil or two mil or whatever and get you guys some money to do it.
Understood.
So, that's where I'm at.
What's that? Right.
Yeah, that's where I'm at. But otherwise, when the time comes, I'm going to want to know where this money's coming from.
We know that.
Thank you.
So, any thoughts on the master plan?
I haven't gone through all of it yet, but what I have read looks excellent. I mean, a lot of hard work, you guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Jennifer, for proofing it probably three times. I locked Jennifer in a room and told her that she couldn't leave until the document was fully proved. It's true. Thank you.
Tracy, do you have anything else to add or anything at this point? Do you have anything else to add at this point or anything?
No.
Okay.
No, I guess what I'm getting is general consensus that obviously we should move forward and distribute it to other members of the community, stakeholders, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks to the whole Parks and Rec Commission.
Yeah.
Did a tremendous, tremendous amount of work. Many are in the audience tonight. Actually, four of us are in the audience tonight.
All right. I'm sorry, hold on, I've lost my agenda here. Okay, that takes us to number five, the board goals for last year of the current term.
So, the last workshop, one of the things that I brought up to the Board of Trustees is what-
Howard, speak in the mic, will you, please?
Sure. The last workshop, one of the things that we discussed is what are the goals for the board's last year in office? We're, you're on your last year of your four-year cycle. I think we've done some amazing work and I think we've accomplished a great deal. And I think there's a lot more to accomplish. It's up to you guys as to how you want to handle this next section of the workshop. Do you want me to go through this? What would you guys, I mean, I know it's kind of getting onto a long meeting and we still have one more item on the agenda, so it's whatever the pleasure of the board is at this moment. Nine o'clock.
Yeah, well, I don't care which way, what do we address first? But I do think the fund balance policy directs a lot of these things.
I actually want to change the fund balance policy. I just want to, and we can talk about it after, and I don't want any votes tonight or anything, but the fund balance is there because passports saved money. We've agreed to spend down the fund balance. In other words, in the general fund, there's the money that comes in every year and there's also this pile of money, extra money, that's enough to go one year if we weren't to bring in any other money.
Ready date, ready date.
That just sits in the bank in a checking account. And then there's the investments that we have. And as you know, we recently changed our investments and we lost money on that because we went from the long-term bonds to SEDARs. And what I would like to do is just, we're spending money, I'm going to name a few things we've taken money out of the general fund for. People's Express, Meals on Wheels, the Darlene Curtis property, the boardroom, the police boat, we've got new computers and a new website. Those are just some of the things that we've taken money out of the general fund. So, I'm just saying, I, as the treasurer, would like to see us take some of that money out of the general fund, even $10,000, and put it in the investment fund. When one SEDAR comes, because they're short-term and they have a maximum, you have to spend at least $100,000 to buy a SEDAR, that we take $10,000 and tack it on next time one rolls over. And I'd also like us to take that fund balance, the part that we're not going to spend, the 85%, and put that in a short-term, a short-term CD. I don't like to see it sitting there in cash. Recently, we changed banks. And at one point, we had, you know, accounts open at PNC and First National. We've got this big giant MIF fund that we've already agreed, we're going to keep 85% of it. So, let's take that 85%. And it doesn't have to be with Michigan Bank. It can stay at First National, but let's put it in a short-term CD. So, it's very liquid, but it's not just sitting there in a checking account. That's it. And I don't need a vote or anything. It's just for you to mull over because no one thinks about that. And I don't want us to be the board that just, because the reason the investments are there and the reason the fund balance is there is because people didn't spend everything they got plus spend down the fund balance.
You know how much interest?
And I'm just, Howard disagrees totally with me on this. I am not the person to say nothing's ever going to happen. Yes, everything's insured. There's still, things can happen. Look at Flynn. You know, we don't have a water system, but things do happen, tornadoes, natural disasters, there's all things. And maybe someday those investments can be used to do something like buy the Vin Curler property or do something really, really big in Whitmore Lake. So, that's it. That's my little spiel.
What kind of interest can we get?
I would like to make a recommendation to put what you just outlined for us on the agenda for next, for the next board so we can vote on it.
What kind of interest can we get on that 85% money right now?
We can't put-
There are really paying lousy interest rates.
Well, I know, that's why.
Yeah, very little. But it's nothing now.
One or two percent.
Better than nothing, yeah. And the fact is that it's not just sitting there where people can, someone could write a check and, you know, not that it would happen.
We can't put the full 85% in a, in a, in a CD. Kathy and I, we disagree on the, on the policy here, but I just want to give you the particulars of how cash flow works. If you were to put the 85% in fund balance in a CD, which you can do, then you're going to need probably another 20 or 30% set aside for cash flow purposes. So, you could, you could probably, you could probably get away in what Kathy's saying and the same, what she's saying from advancing her policy, if we went that direction, you could probably put, I would venture to guess, probably about 45%, maybe 35% of it, of the 85% in an investment vehicle. Because, yeah, because you need, that's right.
I'm sorry, before taxes come in.
That's right.
We're still writing checks and paying bills.
That's right.
So, we have to wait for the money, the revenue to come in. And I understand, I was just using the 85% so people understood what lump of money I'm talking about.
Right.
I don't want us to go borrow money to pay the bills.
That's right.
Yeah, obviously not.
Thank God for Kathy.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, I mean, there's, and some of that fund balance money is in investments already. In fact, one of the things we can certainly put, because I know that Kathy, from a policy perspective, would like to add to those investment dollars. And what we can do at the next meeting is, and I can work with Kathy and Kathy and I and Rick could all work together, we can put kind of a full presentation together of how all those monies are allocated. And what we can try to work on is doing it in a way that is not sort of reports out of BSNA, which get really complicated to sort of read and understand, but kind of a breakdown of where all those dollars are. And that way, then you can kind of have this policy debate. And we, Kathy, we've been meaning, I mean, Kathy's asked for that actually already. We've been meaning to do that. So, it's a good time to do it.
What's the, well, the 15%? Yeah, we said the 85% of fund balance. So, like, what kind of numbers did you-
That's the amount we're always talking about. You know, we have like $400,000 and we've been using that for these different things, like the People's Express and the Meals on Wheels and the boardroom and the police boat and-
Well, the police boat's not included in that. And the Darlene-
Well, we gave them money out of the fund balance to do that.
Right, but, right. But see, at the last audit, I mean, you got to look at it from the perspective of the audit. So, at the last audit, you added to your fund balance by about $3,000. It was like $3,000 or $4,000. So, we started out having, if I recall correctly, well, I think $1.5 million in the bank, which is roughly equivalent to maybe like 120% of fund balance. And Kathy's right, there are some of those things that haven't been included, right? So, the boat is sort of already, we, that, we don't have to worry about that anymore. That's been purchased- been purchased, and it's been audited, and that's not part of the fund balance equation. The Darlene Curtis property, that's not part of the fund balance equation. So, some of those are not part of the fund balance equation, but some are.
Not this year, but last year, and I'm just saying, it's money spent out of the general fund.
Right, right.
And if we invest in all these other things, I would like us to invest in ourselves.
Right.
Even if it's just a pittance, I would like to make that effort to say, yes, this Board did add to the investments. Townships, communities, cities, they have huge investment funds. Ours is not huge by any means. I mean, if there were to be a tragedy at the sewer plant, I mean, it could all be spent rather quickly.
Very good, don't give a thought.
That, that, I'm, but the balance as of a couple days ago is like about $1,005,000 in the MIF account.
Right, right, and so, yeah, I mean, this is, I'll, I can, I can give you the dollars and the cents, and we had this conversation, but Kathy's right, this is purely a policy decision. There is no right or wrong. I mean, I can tell you what the government finance officers, the GFOA recommends, I can tell you what MTA recommends, I can give you, you know, perspectives and opinions on it, but at the end of the day, this is really all about a classic pure policy decision of how much do you think you guys should have in the bank, and how is that...
All those recommendations, that's all they are, 'cause nobody really has a crystal ball, and nobody has the answers, and there is no right or wrong answer.
There's no right or wrong answers. The one thing...
It's like, just how conservative are we?
That's right, and the one thing that is really important to look at is, and it's really critical in this question, is that when you look at the recommendations, and I will tell you, I mean, I'll be honest, the recommendations from GFOA and from the MTA are much lower than the amount that we've set, but when you look at those recommendations, you have to take the perspective of what's the potential disaster. So, what is it that could theoretically come up? And, you know, so, on one hand, you may say, well, the fire department, for example, doesn't have a huge fund balance, and they could have a tanker truck that goes out, and that could be a potential large expenditure. If the sewer plant has an issue, and there's not enough in the sewer fund balance in order to cover that, there may have to be an emergency expenditure from the general fund. So, when you look at the issue...
Howard, I get your take on it, can we just put this on the agenda next time?
Sure.
I get it, I understand what you're saying, but again, no one is a crystal ball, and you're steering us, and when you mention things like other people keep lower, that's...
Sure.
You know, nobody knows what will really happen.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Do we want it on the, in two weeks?
Sure. So, I know we jumped around, we're all over the board today, so we kinda covered the fund balance policy, but let's go back to number four. Oh, no problem. So, let's go back to our goals for the, you know, last year in office, some of the things that we talked about at our retreat over a year ago, or about a year ago, was it?
Yeah.
You know, any thoughts or comments, or anything from, you know, any input from anyone in this point, at this point? Go ahead, Jac.
I think we did talk about, because in our highest priorities, we had the parking lot for the community center as number one on there, and I think we talked about at this point that once the Darlene Curtis house is down, we don't necessarily need to put in a concrete parking lot. So, I think that priority moved, it shifted, it's not a big ticketed item like we thought it would be before. It was only, we purchased the house now, and the house is going to be used in a fire drill and training, and so what we would have then is an empty lot, and we have talked about, you know, just having a lot where people can park their cars. I don't know if there's, I think there's other things on this list that are just equally as more important now, as we've had our three years into being in office, is completion of the sewer capacity study, and making sure that we have a basin in place, and that we can meet the capacity of our sewer system of what we have now. I think that's very, very important. I think looking at sidewalks and bike paths around the lake, we were asked by a member of our, of the community to look at more aesthetics in our, in our community, and those are things that we could add to our community. And of course, the completion of the Barker Road non-motorized pathway. I think those are still high priorities.
You know, what's the, what is the number? You have what, what was it, 1.4, 1.5? What is, or, yeah, well, no, the fund balance, we said we'd reserve 85%, correct?
Yeah, and then...
So, what kind, what numbers are we talking here?
Well, we figured, what, we had just under $400,000?
Yeah, we had just under $400,000 to spend. Four to five.
If we spend down to 85%,
Right.
That gives us about just under $400,000. And that was why we're always mulling over, do we spend it on roads, or spend it on this, and little by little, we've spent little bits of it, but we haven't really...
Impacted.
Yeah, made that big decision, we've kinda spread it out.
We haven't heard you do anything yet. I'd like to, you know, it'd be something that everyone in the township could, you know, benefit from, you know, but what is that? And, yeah, it's a tough call. Anyone have any other thoughts or comments? Wayne, do you wanna spend some money? Do you wanna spend some money? Have any ideas?
Yeah, we should give it back to the taxpayers, we shouldn't, we shouldn't take all this money from the taxpayer.
Right.
And then, and then try to figure out how to waste it. What we should do is collect less millage if we have too much money. That's my take. Nobody's gonna go along with that, I know that.
Well, that's actually a good point for the future, you know, a possibility, yeah, for the future, we can't go backwards now, at this point, and to give back that $400,000 is, excuse me, such a small amount per taxpayer, they, the actual community would better be served by doing something to better it.
Knock a mill off here or there.
Maybe in the future, right?
We don't, we don't have to collect. Every year, we collect, every year, we collect.
We couldn't knock off a whole mill, 'cause we only collect .8.
We collect every penny, we can, we charge our, we charge our, on our property tax, every penny that the law allows. Let's not do that. That would take care of the money.
Well, if it was up to me, I think, you know, complete the sewer capacity study, I think is, you know, a very big topic. You know, completion of the Barker Road non-motorized path, I think is a top priority, and if it was something else that we could do, I mean, you know, that everyone could use, I would be very much in favor of something, you know, for, you know, some bike paths, or park, or, you know, something that everyone can enjoy. I know we talked about, you know, which I think this was after our retreat, you know, like the sidewalk going around the lake, you know, even the one that we do have, you know, the short distance, is in horrible condition, it's unsafe, you know, it'd be nice to see even just what we do have, maybe some improvements to what we currently have versus trying to, you know, add new things, let's fix up what we already have.
And I really like the one about researching the perkable parcels of land, research models of good, of prepare land conditions map showing large perkable parcels, 'cause that gives us a chance to like push development in areas that maybe we haven't thought about, that would be great areas for medium density or high-density development that are perkable, and we wouldn't have to worry about the huge expense of the sewer, that seems to be tying our hands on so many issues. It's like, well, how are they tying to the sewer? How will we expand the sewer?
I think that would be great for this planning commission.
I hear that a lot of areas aren't perkable, I don't, I don't know that for sure, but...
Oh, there's a ton of land in Northfield Township that doesn't perk. Well, 'cause the water, well, because of the soil conditions.
It would be nice for, like I said, to leave that for all future planning commissions and boards, you know, that they have this map.
See, if you're gonna build a house on perkable property, that's one thing, but you're not gonna build commercial on perkable land. Well, if you're within, I believe it's 200 feet of a sewer line, you must hook up to the sewer. That's the law in Northfield Township.
Well, not only the perks, but the valuation of the, the map of the, you know, survey of the property, you know, we have lots of wetlands, and, you know, you're on Riverside, you know, we have all that data, but, you know, a lot of, like, even the old farmers can tell you, like, oh, you know, all that's clay right there, or that's all swampland there, you know, just a really good map indicating all the soil conditions of the township. Any comments down here?
No, I'm exhausted tonight.
I am too. We've been here since six o'clock.
So, the list is, this list is a list that we did put together, I think there are probably some things that aren't on it, some things that could, that we've frankly addressed or done, it could use some modification, I'm not gonna do it tonight, so I'd like the chance to maybe take a better look at it and revisit the topic. In addition, I mean, we're always working on workshops, so it's, it's almost like we're engaged in this process in a, on a smaller scale, every workshop that we, that we have per month, so that's my two cents.
I just saying one more thing that I thought would be good is, in going with what Kathy is saying, you never know when emergencies happen, we had down here create a road reserve, and I think that that's one that we still need to start addressing.
How about we put this on the agenda as another, not voting, but just a discussion item for next week? There's a lot of things that still can be done, and I'd like to work on it sooner than later. Excellent idea about the roads, too. Alright, we still have a lot more to go over on our meeting before our timeline of 10 o'clock ends. That takes us to the second call to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Sure, Mr. Roman, come on up.
I wanna thank the Board for their confidence in reappointing me to the Planning Commission. We have a lot of work to do, and I'm ready to get to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Sam Iacquinto, I as well would like to thank the Board for the reappointment opportunity to serve the residents of Northfield Township, and I do listen to all the residents. Thank you.
Go for it, Sam.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
David Gordon, 5558 Helmer Road. I'm really happy that the planner still stayed here, I brought up a question, and it's the first call to the public. Our last planner was chastised for talking to me and actually billing the township for it. I've looked at the contract that you have with the current, with the new planner, there's nothing about talking to residents, so I'm curious if the Board is interested in what the new policy is in terms of the planners speaking to residents of this community. Hopefully, he'll ask the question at some point, maybe they'll even address it tonight since they're here.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Alright, that takes us on to our Board Member Comments. Wayne?
I have no problem with him talking to the planner. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. There were some very, very impressive resumes that we looked at tonight. I'd like to get people to try to buy and use locally, spend your money locally if you can, and I think we should make a janitor check in our purse tonight, I hope she's okay, as one of our Board Members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. Kathy, you got anything? No? Tracy?
No comment.
Jackie?
Yeah, I do, and normally, I don't speak to these kind of things, but I think I'm gonna step out of my comfort zone and speak to it. I do acknowledge, and this is for you, Sam, I do acknowledge that you do very good things for our community, in both Kiwanos and Pond Hockey, the boards that you're on, but I know, and I also know that you're a man of faith. You begin with a second chance, and I hope that the next two, three years of being on the Planning Commission, that, that you do things a little bit more wisely, and start working with the Board. And I hope to see good things. Thank you.
Angie, anything?
I have two things, I'd like to give a quick happy birthday shout-out to my son Garrett, who I had to miss his birthday dinner tonight.
How old is he?
Twelve.
Okay.
And also, the assessing department is looking for Board of Review alternate members, if anyone's interested in serving on the Board of Review, we are looking for people who are interested. And Jackie, I think the ZBA is also looking for, is it an alternate? Yeah, so if anyone's interested, please let us know. That's all I've got, making a motion to adjourn. Nice, have a nice night, everyone.